Good afternoon. The sixty-eighth meeting of the seventy-third term of your Baltimore City Council is now called to order. As a reminder to members of our community, stakeholders and press, please ensure that your electronic devices are turned off or at a minimum turned on silent so you do not disrupt today's proceedings. Our invocation tonight will be delivered by Pastor Sandra Carlson-Alexis of First English Evangelical Lutheran Church. It is our pleasure and honor to have her with us tonight. Pastor, the floor is yours. Thank you so much Pastor Alexis. Everyone, if you could please remain standing, I instate the pledge of allegiance with me.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. You can be seated at this time. Madam Clerk, if you could please call the roll.
President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Glover, Ramos. We, Mr. President, we have a quorum.
Madam Clerk, if we could now go to the adoption of the journal.
Mr. President, the journal for the November twentieth, twenty twenty-three regular meeting proceedings are on the council member's desk.
Without objection, the journal will be adopted, hearing and seeing no objection, the journal is now adopted. Bills signed by the mayor can be found at the beginning on page two of the agenda. Madam Clerk, if you could please start executive nominations.
Yep, EA two-three dash zero-two-one-four, Page T. Davis Jr., CFA, Member, Fire and Police Employees Retirement System Board of Trustees, District One.
This nomination will be assigned to rules and legislative oversight. Will now turn to bills to be introduced. Madam Clerk, if you could please call the first bill.
City Council Bill two-three dash zero-four-five-six, Charter Amendment Sustainability Fund, Acceptance of Fees, for the purpose of authorizing the sustainability fund to include proceeds from certain revenues dedicated to the fund by ordinance and submitting this amendment to the qualified voters of the city for adoption or rejection, sponsor Conway.
At this time, Chairman Conway, the bill is yours. Now, Madam Clerk, if you could go to bills to be introduced. Actually, we just read in twenty-three dash zero-four-five-six. That will be assigned to rules and legislative oversight. Madam Clerk, next bill. Actually, no, do you want to go back to your? So we're going to go back to twenty-three dash zero-four-six and like to sponsor the bill Chairman Conway speak on his behalf. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. This bill is a very simple bill. It is a slight tweak to the charter that would allow the proposed sustainability fund to accept fees. That's all it does, very simple, very straightforward. It just tweaks it to allow the sustainability fund as allowed in the charter to accept fees as some of our other funds in the charter allow us to do. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Again, that bill has been assigned to rules and legislative oversight. Madam Clerk, if you could please call in the next bill.
City Council Bill two-three dash zero-four-five-seven, Supplementary General Fund Operating Appropriation, Board of Elections, one million three hundred thousand, for the purpose of providing a supplementary general fund operating appropriation in the amount of one million three hundred thousand to the Board of Elections, Service eight-nine-nine, Fair Conduct of Elections, to provide funding for balancing the Board of Election budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-three due to costs associated with the two thousand twenty-two primary election and providing for a special effective date, sponsors the administration.
This bill has been assigned to finance and performance. Madam Clerk, next bill.
City Council Bill two-three dash zero-four-five-eight, Supplementary General Fund Operating Appropriation, Office of Cable and Communications, three hundred thousand, for the purpose of providing a supplementary general fund operating appropriation in the amount of three hundred thousand to the Office of Cable and Communications, Service eight-seven-six, Media Production, to provide funding for balancing the Office of Cable Communications budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-three due to costs associated with staffing, the service and providing for a special effective date, sponsor the administration.
This bill has been assigned to finance and performance. Madam Clerk.
City Council Bill two-three dash zero-four-five-nine, Supplementary General Fund Operating Appropriation, Fire Department, eighteen million nine hundred thousand, for the purpose of providing a supplementary general fund operating appropriation in the amount of eighteen million nine hundred thousand to the Fire Department, Service six-zero-nine, Emergency Medical Services, to provide funding for balancing the Fire Department budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-three due to costs associated with staff overtime payments and contractual services to provide basic life service ambulance services and providing for a special effective date, sponsor the administration.
This bill has been assigned to finance and performance. Madam Clerk.
City Council Bill two-three dash zero-four-six-zero, Supplementary General Fund Operating Appropriation, Health Department, twelve million three hundred thousand, for the purpose of providing a supplementary general fund operating appropriation in the amount of twelve million three hundred thousand to the Health Department, Service three-one-five, Emergency Services, to provide funding for balancing the Health Department budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-three due to costs associated with provider contracts and support services related to COVID and providing for a special effective date, sponsor the administration.
This bill has been assigned to finance and performance. Madam Clerk.
City Council Bill two-three dash zero-four-six-one, Supplementary General Fund Operating Appropriation, Department of Law, one million nine hundred thousand, for the purpose of providing a supplementary general fund operating appropriation in the amount of one million nine hundred thousand to the Department of Law, Service eight-sixty, Administration Law, to provide funding for balancing the Department of Law budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-three due legal fees and support service fees exceeding the adopted budget and providing for a special effective date, sponsor the administration.
This bill has been assigned to finance and performance. Madam Clerk.
City Council Bill two-three dash zero-four-six-two, Supplementary General Fund Operating Appropriation, Liquor License Board, three hundred thousand, for the purpose of providing a supplementary general fund operating appropriation in the amount of three hundred thousand to the Liquor License Board, Service eight-fifty, Liquor Licensing, to provide funding for balancing the Liquor License Board budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-three due to costs associated with staff overtime payments and providing for a special effective date, sponsor administration.
This bill has been assigned to finance and performance. Madam Clerk.
City Council Bill two-three dash zero-four-six-three, Supplementary General Fund Operating Appropriation, Office of Children and Family Success, four hundred thousand, for the purpose of providing a supplementary general fund operating appropriation in the amount of four hundred thousand to the Office of Children and Family Success, Service one-zero-nine, Administration, Children and Family Success, to provide funding for balancing the Office of Children and Family Success budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-three due to costs associated with unplanned contractual staffing costs that were not fully offset by vacancy savings and providing for a special effective date, sponsor the administration.
This bill has been assigned to finance and performance. Madam Clerk.
City Council Bill two-three dash zero-four-six-four, Supplementary General Fund Operating Appropriation, Department of Public Works, one million nine hundred thousand, for the purpose of providing a supplementary general fund operating appropriation in the amount of one million nine hundred thousand to the Department of Public Works, Service six-six-three, Waste Removal and Recycling, to provide funding for balancing the Department of Public Works budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-three due to landfill tipping fees and vehicle rental fees exceeding the adopted budget and providing for a special effective date, sponsor the administration.
This bill has been assigned to finance and performance. Madam Clerk.
City Council Bill two-three dash zero-four-six-five, Tree Removal on City Property Permits and Procedure, for the purpose of establishing certain standards and requirements for authorized tree removal along certain rights of way, requiring that the Department of Recreation and Parks approve any tree removal on land operated by the department, specifying the procedure for tree removal mitigation on land operated by the Department of Recreation and Parks, conforming, clarifying and correcting related provisions, defining certain terms and generally relating to the removal of trees on certain city properties, sponsors the administration and Chair Conway.
This bill has been assigned to Health, Environment and Technology Committee. Madam Clerk.
City Council Bill two-three dash zero-four-six-six, Recyclable Materials and Yard Waste Disposal, for the purpose of prohibiting the disposal of recyclable materials and yard waste in a landfill or an incinerator and providing for a special effective date, sponsor Dorsey.
The body would like to recognize, sponsor the bill, Councilman Dorsey, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President and colleagues. For as long as I have been on this council, I have been asking the question, why we burn diesel fuel to drive big vehicles around the city of Baltimore to collect leaves only to take them to a place to be burned at an incinerator that this city council voted last term to shut down, which was unfortunately overturned by a court. It makes no sense that we are wasting fossil fuels in so many ways just for this one effort of eliminating yard waste, seasonal yard waste, that we could be actually putting back into the ground as rich soil. We used to do this as a city. We used to compost leaves in Leakin Park and people around the city could get these leaves for free and reuse them as soil in their homes. This bill basically just expands an existing prohibition from the disposal of these materials at Quarantine Road to all landfills and incinerators. On background, in nineteen eighty-four, the city of Baltimore acquired the property that is today the Quarantine Road landfill with a projected deposit of eight hundred fifty tons of solid waste going there daily. And in the first week and thereafter, we blew that projection out of the water disposing of two thousand tons there daily, more than twice the projected amount. And eight years later, then Mayor Kurt Schmoke put forth a bill to prohibit recyclables and yard waste from being disposed of at the Quarantine Road landfill for one reason really, just to extend the life of that landfill. And I think we can do better today than what is, than that intent, that we can put these leaves back into use as compost. The city just recently received a grant to advance the longstanding desire of this body and of the city of Baltimore to be more sustainable in our waste practices by finally developing Bolley's Lane composting facility, which are going to, which is going to need these leaves anyway. If you're not, for those who are not familiar with composting of food waste and other materials, it generally requires a thirty-to-one ratio of carbons to nitrogens. That is, for every one pound of food waste that we dispose, that we want to compost, we need thirty pounds of leaves. And so we're going to need all of the browns that we can get as the carbon in this, in this mix here. So we're going to need to use these leaves anyway. What this bill says is that by October first of twenty twenty-five, which if I have to be honest, feels like a generous deadline because I think that we could be doing better today already, but by October of twenty twenty-five at the latest, this bill would have us no longer incinerating leaves. Mr. President, I ask for the cosponsorship of anybody who might join on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Dorsey. I see the hand raised of Chairman Bullock, Chairman Conway, Councilman Burnett, Vice President Middleton, Councilwoman Ramos, Councilwoman Porter, Councilman Glover, Councilman Cohen. Thank you. This bill has been assigned to Health, Environment and Technology. Madam Clerk, first, next bill.
City Council Bill two-three dash zero-four-six-seven, Repeal of Ordinance, ten dash three-nine-seven, Twenty-Fifth Street Station Plains Unit Development, for the purpose of repealing ordinance ten dash three-nine-seven, which designated certain properties of business and industrial plains unit development known as Twenty-Fifth Street Station and providing for a special effective date, sponsors Stokes.
This bill has been assigned to ECD. Madam Clerk, next bill.
Two-three dash zero-four-six-eight, Off-Street Parking, Affordable Housing, for the purpose of eliminating off-street parking requirements for residential project that is subject to inclusionary housing requirements, sponsor Dorsey.
The body would like to recognize, sponsor the bill, Councilman Dorsey, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Cities across the country are eliminating parking minimums. It's bad policy that zoning codes should force the creation of off-street parking as a requirement to be able to open businesses or to create necessary housing, particularly in cities that are underhoused in the way that Baltimore City is. This doesn't go anywhere near as far as what so many other cities across this country are doing to eliminate mandate, to eliminate parking minimums in their zoning codes wholesale. This simply says that in the inclusionary housing projects that are going to be built going forward in the city, projects that are required to adhere to the, to the percentage of inclusive units, those projects need not create off-street parking in order to be able to develop those housing units or any housing units. The idea that we would subsidize projects with public taxpayer dollars in order to create those inclusive units in those developments at the same time that we are driving up the total cost of those developments by the inclusion of parking minimums is nonsensical and financially irresponsible of us as a city. Off-street parking in, at the low end is estimated to be, to cost anywhere from twenty-five to thirty-five thousand dollars per parking space to construct. And when needed to be constructed underground can cost as much as seventy thousand dollars per parking space to construct. That rolling that cost into the overall cost of the development of the project, of any project inevitably goes into the rents that need to be recovered in order to make projects financially sensible. And so Baltimore City has no business driving up the cost of these projects, which even without these minimum parking requirements, developers will build the off-street parking because they believe it's necessary in order to bring tenants into their developments. So we don't even need this in order to achieve that off-street parking. It will happen of its own accord, of its own accord as a, as a market demand. So this simply says that we have no business driving up the cost of something that we are then subsidizing. Mr. President, again, I would invite my colleagues to co-sponsor this bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Dorsey. I see the hand raised of Chairman Schleifer, Chairman Conway, Councilman Burnett, Councilman Cohen, Councilwoman Ramos, Chairman Bullock, Councilwoman Porter. This bill has been assigned to ECD. Madam Clerk, next bill.
Two-three dash zero-four-six-nine, Zoning, Conditional Use Conversion of a Single Family Dwelling Unit to Two Dwelling Units in the R-eight Zoning District, Variances, ten-fourteen Edmondson Avenue, for the purpose of permitting subject to certain conditions, the conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to two dwelling units in the R-eight Zoning District on the property known as ten-fourteen Edmondson Avenue, Block zero-one-one-five, Lot zero-three-seven, is outlined in red on the accompanying plaque and granting a variance from certain bulk regulations, lot area size and providing for a special effective date, sponsor Bullock.
This bill has been assigned to ECD. Madam Clerk, next bill.
City Council Bill two-three dash zero-four-seven-zero, Zoning, Conditional Use Conversion of a Single Family Dwelling Unit to Four Dwelling Units in the R-eight Zoning District, Variances, seven-oh-four North Gilmore Street, for the purpose of permitting subject to certain conditions, the conversion of a single-family dwelling unit into four dwelling units in the R-eight Zoning District on the property known as seven-oh-four North Gilmore Street, Block zero-zero-nine-eight, Lot zero-one-six, is outlined in red on the accompanying plaque, granting variances from certain bulk regulations, lot area size and off-street parking requirements and providing for a special effective date, sponsor Bullock.
This bill has been assigned to ECD. Madam Clerk, if you could please read the first resolution.
City Council Bill two-three dash zero-two-zero-three-R, Informational Hearing, BGE and Forestry, for the purpose of inviting representatives from the Baltimore Gas and Electric Company and the Baltimore City Department of Recreation and Parks to discuss BGE's approach to tree trimming and tree management when maintaining power lines and related equipment, sponsor Conway.
At this time, the body would like to yield its time to sponsor of this resolution, Chairman Mark Conway. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is my third bill today about trees. You guys know I love trees. And so this is particularly focused around the relationship between BG&E and the Forestry Division within Wreckin' Parks, making sure that we are coordinating as best as possible to make sure that trees are well maintained around our power lines. We know that our Forestry Department, actually, the Forestry Division is not very well resourced and as a community, as a representative for a district with a ton of trees, which I love very much, it can sometimes be burdensome for the Forestry Division. And so what I'd like to see and what we want to learn more about is how the Forestry Division and BG&E are working together to make sure that trees specifically within proximity to our power lines that have, of course, impacts on people's ability to get power to their homes are well maintained regularly and that all coordination between the two folks are happening. So, thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Conway. This bill has been assigned to Public Safety and Government Operations. Madam Clerk, next resolution.
City Council Bill two-three dash zero-two-zero-four-R, Informational Hearing, Modular and Tiny Houses, Benefits and Challenges, for the purpose of inviting representatives from the Department of Housing and Community Development, the Department of Planning, the Board of Municipal and Zoning Appeals, the Department of Transportation, the Department of Public Works and other relevant stakeholders to discuss, one, the benefits of increasing modular and tiny housing in Baltimore City, two, common challenges that arise when a homeowner is constructing a modular or tiny house, and three, how city agencies can streamline processes to better facilitate construction of modular and tiny houses in Baltimore City, sponsor Porter.
Body would like to recognize, sponsor the bill, Councilwoman Felicia Porter, the floor is yours.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. This resolution calls for city agencies to come before the council to discuss the overall approach and feasibility of modular and tiny home development in Baltimore City. We know that we currently do have a process within DHCD, however, many of the developers do not know this process. Other jurisdictions such as Pennsylvania, Oregon and California have passed legislation to address development zoning regulations, permits and more within their housing and zoning codes. Ultimately, I believe this discussion and report can get innovative steps towards the pressing vacant housing crisis within Baltimore City. And you?
I'm sorry, are we having a small audio problem? If TV twenty-five, if you could confirm? Am I, I'm okay? Maybe we're just having a problem with that mic? Not sure. If you could talk real quick, just for a quick test? TV twenty-five? No. If you could take the mic from the twelfth district? We swap it up? Yeah. I'll make the announcement. There we go.
Testing, testing.
We're good. Okay. Would you like to give us this, so the folks in the general public can hear you? Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you. So this resolution calls for city agencies to come before the council to discuss the overall approach and feasibility of modular and tiny home development in Baltimore City. Other jurisdictions such as Pennsylvania, Oregon and California have passed statewide legislations that addresses the development, zoning regulations, permits and more within their housing and zoning codes. While Baltimore City has a current process for this in DCH, in DHCD, many of the developers and community do not know about this process or the process is laborious. Ultimately, I believe this, this is a discussion that is important yet innovative to addressing the vacant housing crisis across Baltimore City. I look forward to the cosponsorship of my colleagues. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you so much, Councilwoman Porter, and thank you to Charm TV for ensuring we have full accessibility to the public. I see the hand raised for cosponsorship. Councilman Cohen, Councilman Glover, Councilwoman Ramos, Councilman Burnett, Vice President Middleton. This bill has been assigned to ECD. Madam Clerk, next resolution.
City Council Bill two-three dash zero-two-zero-five-R, Investigative Hearing, Procurement in Baltimore City, for the purpose of inviting the Bureau of Procurement, the Department of Finance and the Bureau of Budget and Management Research to brief the city council on procurement practices in Baltimore City with regard to their impact on the effectiveness of the city's procurement process, including a discussion of potential problems identified within these processes and solutions to improve city bidding and procurement, sponsor Conway.
At this time, the body would like to recognize Councilman Chairman Conway, sponsor the bill.
Thank you, Mr. President. This, of course, has been an issue that the city has struggled with for a very long time and one of the issues that I really hope to tackle upon coming onto the council very early on. The administration has put a ton of work into trying to shore up our procurement system. We've seen some new technology come through the door, but I really am looking for an opportunity to have an open and robust discussion about where we continue to see challenges and where we can continue to improve our procurement system. For those that remember, one of the points that I made during our budget sessions this past season was that nearly thirty, or maybe over thirty percent of our operational budget actually goes out the door through this system. So if we can find ways to improve our procurement system, have it be more competitive, not only can we reduce prices, but we can get a better return on all that money that goes out the door. This is a really, really important opportunity for us to make sure that we find to in our city and really am looking forward to hearing back from the agencies on the steps that have been taken so far and the steps that we have yet to take in order to improve our procurement system. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. I'll ask for a cosponsorship if you could put me down, Madam Executive Secretary, as a co-sponsor of the bill. I also see a hand raised of Councilwoman Ramos, Councilwoman Felicia Porter, Councilman Zeke Cohen, Councilman Chris Burnett, Madam VP and Chairman Bullock. I ask, Mr. Chair, that you include in your analysis and information gathering from the administration, the civic initiative bid, so if you could put that down, as well as the emergency contracts given to civic initiative for procurement reform. Obviously, for those who have watched Board of Estimate meetings, if you're not bored at nine o'clock on Wednesday mornings, this has been one of, a stickler of mine and a very major concern of mine in dealing with the finance department in an initiative to go after procurement reform. And I have some deep, deep issues with that contract and what has been produced to date from it. Also, that civic initiatives. I also see the hand raised of Chairman Costello. He would like to be added as a co-sponsor to this resolution. At this time, I believe that there is a floor amendment on council member's desk and the body would like to recognize Chairman Schleifer.
Thank you, Mr. President. From the floors of Congress, just last week, the Democratic Senate Majority Leader described the rise of antisemitism in this country as a five-alarm fire, and he couldn't be more right. As a grandchild of Holocaust survivors, I grew up hearing firsthand accounts of the horrors of the Holocaust. I never fully understood how the Holocaust could manifest or how anyone could allow such a thing to happen until October seventh. Hate crimes are disproportionately affecting the Jewish people. Jews make up only two percent of the population, yet we are the subject of fifty-five percent of all religious-based hate crimes. And according to the ADL, in the past two months since October seventh, hate crimes against Jews have increased by over three hundred percent. In Baltimore and the United States and across the world, in Israel and on college campuses, Jews are In Baltimore, in the United States, and across the world, in Israel and on college campuses, Jews are being targeted, isolated. Single-doubt and discriminated against for simply being Jewish. It's painful and horrifying as we hear protesters, including right here in the council chambers, using the Hamas slogans. That call for the extermination and destruction of Jews. It's repulsive how anybody can try to justify the horrific massacre of October seventh. That claimed the lives of thousands of innocent men, women and children. This council has stood together in the past against injustice, and it's time that we stand together for our Jewish brothers and sisters in Baltimore and Israel and across the globe. This resolution does just that. It calls to condemn the Hamas terrorists. Who committed atrocities to innocent people both in Israel and in Gaza, and calls for the release of all hostages being held in their terror tunnels. And so I would ask for any co-sponsorships for anybody who's interested before I move the bill.
I'll go sponsor. I see the hand raised of Chairman Costello, Councilman Glover, Councilman Cohen.
Mr. President, I'd like to uh, move uh, this bill for immediate adoption.
Well, first we have to suspend.
The appropriate rules.
So uh, you've asked to suspend the rules?
Correct.
So without objection, uh, rules will be suspended for immediate ado- adoption.
Mr. President, I'd like to.
Rules are suspended. Uh, Mr. Chair, you have the floor now.
I'd like to move the resolution forward to be immediately adopted.
So we're gonna have to have a roll call. Uh, Madam Clerk, if you could please call the roll.
President Mosby, Cohen.
Sorry. You would like to explain your vote? Okay, please sit down. Uh, so uh, we have a motion on the floor. We've suspended the rules for immediate adoption. Now we have to have a uh, qualified uh, roll call. Uh, you can explain your vote if you would like to at this time. Um, the Councilman from the first district has asked to explain his vote. The floor is yours.
Hey, Mr. President, I rise in support of this resolution. Also, the grandson of Holocaust survivors also have. Some family that was called up as reservist um, in the Israeli military after October seventh. Um, and just want to say praying for all the innocent lives in the Middle East. Um, Jewish, Muslim, uh, the innocent folks on both sides of the conflict deserve to live in peace. Um, also want to condemn all acts of antisemitism like my colleague did, as well as Islamophobia, racism, which we also know has been rising in our country, and I vote yes.
Madam Clerk?
President Mosby.
Aye.
Cohen. McCray. Dorsey. Conway. Schleifer.
Yes.
Middleton. Burnett. Bul- Bullock.
Yes, uh, the body calls on Chairman Bullock. The floor is yours.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, and uh, thank you Chairman Schleifer for bringing this uh, to the floor. I am in support of condemning terrorist attacks upon innocent people for talking about folks who are being kidnapped, whether it be women and children who are, who are being injured. At the same time, as a student of history, I think it's also important for us to think of context. And while it's a full stop that we condemn terrorists, we also condemn antisemitism, Islamophobia. At the same time, one of the longstanding retorts has been the two-state solution in terms of this longstanding conflict. The, the fact is that there are people who also are fighting for self-determination, and just like the state of Israel deserves to exist in terms of people for self-determination. That also needs to exist for the Palestinian people as well. So yes, I do support this resolution, but at the same time, understand the full cont- the full context and complexity. Of this issue that has been longstanding throughout the decades. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Uh, Porter. Costello. Glover. Ramos.
That is, do we take count? So we have four abstentions. Four or five abstentions? It, it doesn't pass. With immediate adoption, it has to have all. We need twelve votes, so with that, it does not pass. Mr. Chair?
Mr. President, I'd like to uh, rise to point out something that as a Jew, I've experienced my entire life and Jews across the world have experienced their entire lives. And the Senate Majority Leader Chuck Schumer pointed out so eloquently last week, which is what is known as the double standard. If you're not familiar with the double standard, I strongly encourage you to go look it up. I strongly encourage you to go. Hear from the Senate Majority Leader's own words on his social media pages, on YouTube, about what the double standard looks like. And so I'd like to point to another resolution that this city council passed. When the horrific terrorist attacks occurred in New Zealand against two mosques, which is known as the. Largest terrorist attack in New Zealand, where forty-eight people were murdered simply because they were Muslim. This city council, and I co-sponsored, along with many other people in this room, including some who abstained, we passed this resolution. Now, my resolution, as you can see in yellow, is identical to the resolution that we passed unanimously. In fact, there's only one line that is different. I'll read it to you. The only line that is different between these two resolutions is the words "end demands the return of all hostages being held in Gaza." With exception to those few words. These two resolutions are completely identical. I encourage you to read them side by side. I will post them up online as side by side. And all of you will bear witness to the double standard that exists and has existed my entire life and in the Jewish community. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Before we move on, um, I will allow for folks to change their vote. If there's. Any folks that are interested in changing their vote, now would be the time. You'd like to be a co-sponsor? Uh, we have one additional co-sponsor in Chairman Conway. Anyone would like to change their vote? If not, uh, the resolution fails uh, for immediate adoption. Um. Next, we turn to consent calendar. You can find the consent calendar in section A. At the back of the agenda is the motion to approve the consent calendar. Been moved and probably second. All in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries, the consent calendar is approved. We will now move to bills on second reader. Before we do, I'd like to recognize Chairman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move we read short titles for second and third reader for the duration of the meeting.
Without objection, we will be on short titles for the duration of today's meeting. Are there any objections? Hearing and seeing none, we are in short titles. First, we're gonna go to ECD. Madam Clerk, if you could please read in the first bill.
City Council Bill two-three dash zero-four-three-six Urban Renewal Brooklyn Curtis Bay Renewal Area Designation and Urban Renewal Plan.
Body would like to recognize Madam Vice President.
Thank you, Mr. President. Bill number twenty-three dash oh-four-three-six. This bill was heard on November twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-three. It was voted favorable as amended. There are floor amendments on my colleague's desk, and I'm going to defer to uh, Councilwoman Porter to introduce and explain the amendment.
All right, Councilwoman Porter, you're the floor leader. Please talk of us, talk to us about your amendments.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. Um, so the amendment on my colleague's desk just seeks to add on page two of the committee amendments. In column I-one and line five inserting the zoning classification I-two.
Thank you. Madam VP, are you gonna call it in or are you gonna call it in? You would like to call it in for motion?
Yes, Mr. President, I, I'd like to move the amendment.
It's motion on the floor. Has it been seconded? It's been moved and probably seconded. All in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the floor amendment has been adopted. Madam VP, the floor is back to you.
And I move the bill uh, favorable as amended.
It's been moved and probably seconded. All in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. Actually, do we have committee amendments that happened before we had the floor amendments? Or did the floor amendments take care of the committee amendments? Do you remember if we had any committee amendments on this bill? We did. Um, no- nothing will change, so just for the purpose of the record, uh, let's ensure that we say any committee amendments that were adopted at committee, that we embed that in the bill. So what we're gonna do is, um, you just call, move for the committee amendments, uh, and then a second, and then we'll approve it, and then we'll go to approve the entire bill.
I move the committee amendments.
It's been moved and probably seconded. All in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the committee amendments are now adopted. Madam VP, the floor is yours.
And then I move the bill favorable with all amendments.
The bill has amended. It's been moved and probably seconded. All in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the bill will be printed for third reading. Madam Clerk?
City Council Bill two-three dash zero-four-zero-nine zoning conditional use conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to three, three dwelling units in the R-eight zoning district variances twenty-one-twenty-seven McCullough Street.
Madam Vice President, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, Bill number twenty-three dash oh-four-oh-nine. This resolution was also heard on November twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-three. It was voted favorable as amended. There are finding of facts on my colleague's desk. I move the findings.
Is there a second? It's been moved and probably seconded. All in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the finding of facts are adopted. Madam VP?
And there are also amendments on my colleague's desk. I move the amendments.
It's been moved and probably seconded. We adopt amendments. All in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the committee amendments are adopted. Madam VP, the floor is yours.
And I move the bill favorable as, I move the bill favorable as amended.
It's been moved and probably seconded for us to move the bill uh, as amended. All those in favor, please say aye. And all those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the bill will be printed for third reading. City Council Bill. Two-three-zero-four-two-zero, the clerk said, I'm doing her job. Madam Clerk, please call the next bill.
City Council Bill two-three dash zero-four-two-zero Residential Permit Parking Program Area, Brunt Street area.
I get excited once in a while. Madam VP, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Uh, Bill number twenty-three dash oh-four-two-zero. This resolution was also heard on November twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-three. It was voted favorable as amended. There are committee amendments on my colleague's desk. I move the amendments.
It's been moved and probably seconded. All in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the amendments are adopted. Madam VP, the floor is yours.
And I also move this bill uh, favorable as amended.
It's been moved and probably seconded. All in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, this bill will be printed for third reading. Madam Clerk?
City Council Bill two-three dash zero-four-one-zero Rezoning sixty-three-eleven Eastern Avenue.
Madam VP, the floor is yours.
Uh, Bill number twenty-three dash oh-four-one-zero. This resolution was also heard on November twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-three. It was voted favorable. There are findings of facts on my colleague's desk. I move the findings.
It's been moved and seconded for us to adopt finding of the facts. All those in support, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the finding of facts are now adopted. Madam VP, the floor is yours.
And I move the bill favorable.
It's been moved and probably seconded. All in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, this bill will be printed for third reading. Uh, now we're gonna go to rules and legislative oversight. Madam Clerk, if you could please call the first bill.
EA-two-three dash zero-two-one-two David Marcosi, Member Board of Municipal and Zoning Appeals, District One.
At this time, I'd like to recognize Chair of the Committee, Chairman Schleifer. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Rules and Legislative Oversight Committee held a hearing on November thirtieth to consider these two nominations. Uh, for the BMZA, and so I'd like to move EA twenty-three dash zero-two-one-two David Marcosi favorable as amended, favorable.
It's been moved and probably seconded. All in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the bill will be printed for third reading. Madam Clerk, I'm sorry, we don't have to. No, it's uh, not third reading. Um, it's recommend, the recommendation will be confirmed as accepted. Madam Clerk, next confirmation.
EA-two-three dash zero-two-one-three Elizabeth Cornish, Member Board of Municipal and Zoning Appeals, District Twelve.
Body would like to recognize Chair of the Committee, Chairman Schleifer. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to move this nomination favorable.
Been moved and probably seconded. All in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the recommendation for confirmation is accepted by the Baltimore City Council. Now we're gonna go to Ways and Means. Madam Clerk?
City Council Bill two-three dash zero-four-four-zero Sale of Property Market Center Renewal Plan Area Thirty-two Properties.
Body would like to recognize Chairman of the Committee, Chairman Costello. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. There's amendments on my colleague's desk. Can I move the amendments?
Been moved and probably seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the amendments are adopted. Mr. Chair, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the bill favorably as amended.
It's been moved and probably seconded. All in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, uh, this bill will be printed for third reading. Um, before we go too uh, much into the uh, agenda and we get to the fun business that we have folks here excited. Uh, to complete, I wanted to introduce to the city, uh, our new pages in the page program, so we're gonna embarrass them real quick. So, uh, they are Arlo Linton. Uh, oh, Latini, I don't have the other I. Uh, Lentini and Sasha Judy. If you guys please could stand. So they'll be hanging out with us uh, on council hearing days. Um. Latini attends Bard, alright, and Judah attends, Judy attends a school here in the city called Baltimore City College. Thank, thank you for your public service, and we look forward to working with you and seeing you grow uh, throughout this term. Thank you so much. Now, we're gonna turn to bills on third reading. Madam Clerk, if you could please call the first bill.
City Council Bill two-two dash zero-one-nine-five Inclusionary Housing for Baltimore City. President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Burnett, Bullock. Porter, Costello, Glover and Ramos.
This bill is approved. I don't uh, overstate when I say this is a historic bill. Uh, this is a bill that has um, really kind of been a, a, a sore. Um, uh, patch in our city from a legislative perspective, the past inclusionary housing bill for seventeen years. That shamefully only created a couple thirty or so uh, housing units throughout our city. Now, as we continue to utilize our tax base, as we continue to grow communities, particularly communities downtown and around the end harbor. You know, we understand and know that mixed-use, mixed-income uh, type of communities are our safest communities. They're our best communities, particularly as it relates to our young folks in development. Uh, and they're the most equitable ways of pushing our city forward. Uh, there's been a tremendous amount of advocacy work on two sides. Uh, folks who are huge affordable housing, uh, experts uh, and advocates, but then also from the developers. Uh, in, in between was this council and this administration. I constantly say, uh, there's no perfect bill, nor a perfect process, particularly when you deal with substantive legislation. Uh, and clearly the past year plus for this bill has shown and proven that. Uh, but I think that we all uh, can be extremely proud that when we look back in seventeen years at all of the uh, uh, fights. All of the discussion and dialogue, uh, that we can truly be happy about what we were able to do. Um, I constantly say that this is not the end, this is just the beginning. Um, but it's type, the type of substantive legislation that as City Council President, I've always been committed to as a legislator, and I will continue to be committed to. And again, you know, great policy does not happen overnight. It takes time, it takes a lot of work, and it takes a lot of effort from folks all across the board. So again, uh, I would like to thank all the advocates on both sides. I would also like to thank the quarterback for the Baltimore City Council, uh, that's him, Ms. Odette Ramos. Uh, you know, uh, give it up for her. So as a freshman council member, I carried this bill. It was that last bill that I couldn't get across the finish line before I left. Uh, and I always knew when I returned back to these chambers, uh, that I would fight for an inclusionary housing bill. Uh, that I could be uh, proud of, and more importantly, my mother, uh, and my family members and my community members could all be proud of. So thank you to each and every one of you for the hard work. Councilwoman Odette Ramos, would you like to say anything? I'm putting her on the spot a little bit.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Um, thank you for the opportunity to uh, lead this bill. This has been um, a real, a big process. Um, I've learned a lot. There's, there's a lot to do, but I'm very proud of, of the work that we've done. Um, it is the, one of the first steps that we need to take to dismantle the racist housing policies that were made right here in this chamber. Um, and we are here to dismantle them, and this is one of the first steps. Uh, there's a lot more to go, and I'm grateful for your support. Um, and uh, pushing to make this happen. I'm uh, grateful to all of my colleagues, uh, grateful to the uh, Mayor's Office as well, and uh, to the advocates. Also, big, big, huge thanks to. Also, big, big, huge thanks to Roz and Bill Drafting. Uh, she deserves all the flowers and the chocolate and everything else that we can get her for all of the many um versions of this that we did because uh we were trying to make this uh as good a bill as possible, listening to so many people to make it happen. So I just want to say thanks to everybody.
Thank you so much. And this has truly been a team effort. I would like to again thank the Mayor's Office and Chief of Staff Marvin James, as well as Director of Government Relations. Nina Themelis, thank you guys. It's been a long day, alright? Um, and then um from the Council President perspective, uh Erin DeGraffenright, Nathan Poole, uh Dexter Lockme, uh Jen Haslam, Tiffany Macklin. Um, again, it's been a truly a team effort all across the board. Big work, this is a heavy lift, um and excited that we were able to get this thing done. With that, Madam Clerk, if you could please call the next bill.
Yep, City Council Bill two three dash zero three six six zoning conditional use of a single family dwelling unit to two dwelling units in the R eight zoning district, two thousand and one Boone Street. President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Glover, Ramos.
This bill is approved. Madam Clerk?
City Council Bill two three dash zero three six nine high performance inclusionary housing tax credit.
At this time, I'd like to recognize Councilwoman, in support of the bill, Councilwoman Ramos, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is part two of the inclusionary housing package um introduced in uh March of this year. Colleagues, before you, there are two sets of floor amendments. Um, one, the first one uh is marked corrective amendment. Uh, when we uh put in the, the committee amendments on second reader, there was an error. This uh, this particular amendment corrects that error so that those committee amendments uh are conforming. So I move the amendment.
Is there a second? It's been moved and probably second, all in favor please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. Madam Floor Leader?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Um, on my colleague's desk, there is another set of amendments. These are um clarifying and technical in nature uh that came uh after our second reader. Um, I will go through them quickly if that's alright.
Yes.
Uh, the first one uh corrects a um date uh error in uh the, the tax credit bill. This is all just for the tax credit bill. Um, the second amendment um is clarifying in terms of the uh which talking about each affordable unit uh in the months in which that the affordable unit was rented. So that's talking about the formula by which the tax credit is calculated. Uh, amendment number three also clarifies the formula by which uh the uh tax credit is calculated. So it's the first full year tax bill year, tax year issued for the uh property after the Department of Finance has received the completed application and documentation. Uh, and then uh this, the next part of that amendment uh is the uh conforming with the thirty year um affordability period. Amendment number four just clarifies that in that particular section of the bill, we were talking about the high performance uh market rate tax credit. Uh, and then amendment number five uh substitutes fifty percent of AMI to sixty percent of AMI. That particular clause is where uh the bill, the tax credit does not apply to uh projects that have more than twenty percent of their units uh that are affordable to sixty percent of AMI, um making it very clear that this is for inclusionary uh market rate developments. Um, and amendment number six is uh again technical. I move the amendments.
It's been moved and probably second, all in favor please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the amendments are adopted. Um, this bill will be held over for one meeting, uh that is just in council rules. Uh, we have the statutory required meeting on Thursday, uh so this is not to put another delay in the process. This is just to ensure good governance, it stood up. Um, if it was in an urgent manner, uh then we could possibly go down that pathway, but we thought it was best uh to just allow the process to proceed and we'll have the final vote this coming Thursday. Thank you so much again for your leadership on that. Um, Madam Clerk, if you could please call the next bill.
City Council Bill two three dash zero three eight six landmark list home of the friendless. President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Glover, Ramos.
This bill is approved. Madam Clerk?
City Council Bill two three dash zero four two nine South Baltimore Gateway Community Impact District Management Authority Board of Directors. President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Glover, Ramos.
This bill is approved. Before we go into committee announcements, I just want to make sure I say on the record uh that uh Chairman uh Robert Stokes uh has an excused absence. So if the Executive Secretary can ensure that an excused absence is marked uh in Chairman Stokes's name. With that, we're going to go into a committee uh hearings. The first one, I'm going to call out committee as a whole, uh which is on legislative... Gotcha. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, we will have a committee as a whole hearing on Thursday, December the fourteenth at three thirty uh PM on the structural imbalances um for the purpose of calling on the Department of Finance, Bureau of Budget, and Management Research to present and discuss projected structural imbalance of the city of Baltimore that has been estimated approximately a hundred million dollars. As the city has uh constant, the city council is taking its new role and responsibility extremely seriously. You know, obviously, we set up the Finance and Performance Committee, um but we literally turning the budget process from a couple week, couple month process to a year-long process. Thank you for the leadership of Chairman Costello, as well as Chairman Bullock, as we continue to take on these new roles and responsibilities. Uh, that will be a committee as a whole hearing. The next one is a committee of a whole hearing on Monday, February the fifth, two thousand and twenty-four at two PM uh to do the annual comprehensive financial report. Most people look at this as called the CAFR. Uh, we have a new uh name in the annual comprehensive financial report. So again, that will take place on Monday, February the fifth, two thousand and four at two PM. This is new. Uh, the CAFR is always presented to the Board of Estimates. Uh, now moving forward, the CAFR will be presented to the Baltimore City Council. Again, just ensuring that we are aligned with understanding um not only the budget, but also the audit process associated with the budget uh to make us more prepared for the budget process as we continue to mature in the budget process as a council. Next up, we're going to go to ECD. Are there any committee announcements for ECD? The floor is yours, Madam VP.
Thank you. The Economic and Community Development Committee will hear bill number twenty three dash oh four three five on Tuesday, January ninth, twenty twenty four at two oh one PM in the afternoon. And this um is a added bill to uh hearings that um, a hearing that's already scheduled. It's uh zoning code modifications introduced by Councilmember Schleifer. And just a reminder to make sure those uh advertisements are done at the uh time that they're supposed to be um allotted for this hearing to take place. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam VP. Next up, Education, Workforce, and Youth. Uh, Health, Environment, and Technology. Chairwoman McCray, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Health, Environment, and Technology Committee will hold a hearing on Resolution two three dash zero one eight six R. Informational hearing examining the state of Baltimore's middle neighborhoods on Wednesday, December the twentieth, twenty twenty-three at ten AM. The hearing will be held in the council chamber.
Thank you, Chairwoman. Next up, we're going to Public Safety Government Operations. Next, Rules Legislative Oversight. Ways and Means. The floor is yours, Chairman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to suspend Rule ten two to announce a hearing.
Without objections, uh rules will be suspended, hearing and seeing none. Uh, Mr. Chair, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ways and Means Committee will hold a hearing on Tuesday, December twelfth at ten AM in chambers. Council Bill twenty three dash zero four five two supplementary general fund operating appropriation mayorality-related arts and culture in the amount of five hundred eighty-one thousand, three hundred and thirty-four dollars. By way of background, this is the fiscal year twenty twenty-four quarter three installment for BOPA. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And last and certainly not least, Finance and Performance. Chairman Bullock, the floor is yours.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Um, the Finance and Performance Committee will be hearing, um having a hearing on Thursday, December seventh, here in council chambers at three PM, and that will be for quarterly budget briefings. Also, I move to suspend Rules ten two and ten three to announce a hearing.
Without objection, the rules are suspended. Hearing and seeing none, rules are suspended. Chairman Bullock, please proceed.
Alright, on Thursday, December seventh at three oh one PM, uh the committee will be hearing City Council Bill two three zero four five seven supplementary uh general fund oper, operating appropriation, Board of Elections. I also move to suspend uh Rules ten two and uh ten three to announce a hearing.
Without objection, Rules ten two and ten three will be suspended. Hearing and seeing none, they're suspended.
Okay, on Thursday, December seventh at three oh two PM, we will be hearing uh City Council Bill two three zero four five eight uh city uh supplementary general fund operating appropriation, Office of Cable and Communications. Also, I move to suspend Rules...
Hold on one second. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, uh now, if you could please go to the next bill? No, go ahead. Oh, keep moving. Alright, uh, now we're going to Bill two three zero four five nine supplementary general fund operations appropriating uh Fire Department. You have to suspend those rules too, right?
Yes.
Alright, please call for the suspension.
I move to suspend Rules ten two and ten three to announce a hearing.
Without objection, the rules will be suspended. Hearing and seeing none, the rules are suspended. Mr. Chair?
Again, that is for City Council Bill two three zero four five nine supplementary general fund operating appropriations for the Fire Department. Alright, I move to suspend Rules ten two and ten three to announce a hearing.
Without objection, rules will be suspended. Hearing and seeing none, please proceed, Mr. Chair.
Yes, on Thursday, December seventh at three oh four PM, we'll be hearing City Council Bill two three zero four six zero supplementary general fund operating appropriations Health Department.
Thank you.
I move to suspend Rules ten two and ten three to announce a hearing.
Without objection, ten, Rules ten two and ten three will be suspended. Hearing and seeing none, they're suspended. Mr. Chair, the floor is yours.
Thank you. On Thursday, December seventh at three oh five PM, the committee will be hearing City Council Bill two three zero four six one supplementary general fund operating appropriation Law Department. I move to suspend Rules ten two and ten three to announce a hearing.
Without objection, Rules ten two and ten three will be suspended. Hearing and seeing none. Mr. Chair, the floor is yours.
On Thursday, December seventh at three oh six PM, the uh, the committee will be hearing City Council Bill two three zero four six two supplementary general fund operating appropriations Liquor License Board.
Mr. Chair?
I move to suspend Rules ten two and ten three to announce a hearing.
Without objection, Rules ten two and ten three will be suspended. Hearing and seeing none, they're suspended. Mr. Chair, please proceed.
On Thursday, December seventh as well, at three oh seven PM, we'll be hearing City Council Bill two three zeros, zero four six three supplementary general fund operating appropriations Office of Children and Family Success. I move to suspend Rules ten two and ten three to announce a hearing.
Without objection, Rules ten two and ten three will be suspended. Hearing and seeing none, Mr. Chair?
Thank you. On Thursday, December seventh at three oh eight PM, the committee will be hearing City Council Bill two three zero four six four supplementary general fund operating appropriations Department of Public Works.
Now move, oh. Now we're just moving on to...
Okay, now we have uh, as previously scheduled, uh let's say Thursday, December seventh at three ten PM. That will be Resolution two one zero zero six two, um American Rescue Plan ARPA. And then the Finance and Performance Committee will be here, holding the following legislative oversight hearings. So these don't need rule suspensions. Alright, so Thursday, January eleventh at uh twenty twenty-four at three PM, here in council chambers, we'll be having legislative oversight briefing, tax increment financing, payment in lieu of taxes, and tax credit working group. Also, on Thursday, January twenty-fifth at three PM, we'll be having legislative oversight agency briefings for the Department of Transportation. On Thursday, February fifteenth at three PM, here in council chambers, we'll be having legislative oversight agency briefing for grants management. And then lastly, on Thursday, February twenty-ninth at three PM, we'll be having legislative oversight agency briefing for the Fire Department. Thank you for your indulgence.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, at this time, uh before we go into regular announcements, there's only one day a year uh where uh Chairman uh Mark Conway and Chairman John Bullock's ice is colder than mine, and that would be on December the fourth uh each year. Yes, every day. Uh, that is their, uh, if you know, you know, but that is their Founder's Day for fraternity, Alpha Phi, Alpha Fraternity. So congratulations to your fraternity. I'm pretty sure you guys are gonna enjoy it tonight, or at least talk to your line brothers or something. Uh, with that, we're gonna go into regular announcements. I see the hand raised of Chairman Costello. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask for two moments of silence. Uh, the first is for Ms. Maggie Hudson uh who passed away recently uh at the very young age of a hundred and four years old. Uh, Ms. Maggie was a parishioner at Leadenhall Baptist Church in Sharp Leadenhall. Uh, she was um one of the first women hired by the BNO Railroad shortly after moving here from Mississippi in nineteen forty-three. I'd also like to ask for a moment of silence for Tom Carney, who recently passed away. Uh, he uh was a resident of Locust Point. You would find no greater student of history. Uh, left behind his loving wife, Missy Martin, and was a parishioner at St. Ignatius. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Are there any additional announcements, Councilman Bullock? Uh, sorry, Councilman Burnett?
We get that a lot, don't worry. Uh, I just wanted to invite uh the citizens of Baltimore and the body to our uh holiday celebration at the Edmonton Village Shopping Center uh this Friday, December eighth, from four PM to eight PM. Uh, we have Santa Claus, we have hot cocoa, we get food. Um, we have a lot going on. And more importantly, as I've stated before, uh, this is a resurgence of a longstanding tradition at the Edmonton Village Shopping Center to have Christmas lights and a Christmas theme. Uh, and so whenever we went out to, uh, as we've tried to restore that, as well as you can see, construction is underway. Uh, so our, our tax dollars are hard at use to restore a once uh glory Economic Center, glorful Economic Center in southwest Baltimore. So I hope to see you there on Friday at four o'clock.
Thank you. Are there any additional committee announcements? Uh, I'll take the honor, Councilman, um, Torrance is not here today, but you don't have to drive forty-five minutes away to see hundreds of thousands of Christmas lights. Uh, the Baltimore City Rexon Parks um are unleashing tomorrow an amazing display of, I believe, close to three hundred thousand lights uh in Druid Hill Park. Um, uh, it'll be mostly uh drivable, uh but on a couple nights, they're gonna have it to be walkable as well as um have a bike night uh in Druid Hill Park uh with, again, close to three hundred thousands lights. Uh, we haven't done this in the city, and I don't know since I've been alive, I'm not sure if there was something that we undertook for a while, but this was an initiative by Director Moore. I asked all folks from across the city to come out and support uh and look at the hard work that DP, that uh Rexon Parks put into uh creating a festive, joyful, fun environment for all Baltimoreans in Druid Hill Park. With that, Madam VP, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank, thank you, Mr. President. Before I go into the uh regular meeting date, just want to add two uh names to the moment of silence. Uh, two family members, my family members, that have passed away in a matter of three weeks, and that's Patricia Copeland, which was eighty-nine, and Jean Geraldine Green, which was ninety-three years old. Both of these ladies were my aunts, and they uh played a crucial part in uh the village that I grew up to help me become the woman that I am today. So I'd like to add them to uh the moment of silence list. And the next regular meeting of the Baltimore City Council will be held on Thursday, December seventh, twenty twenty-three at five PM. At this time, we will recognize a moment of silence for the now two hundred and forty-nine victims of homicide this year. And a moment of silence for Maggie Hudson, Tom Carney, Patricia Copeland, and Jean Geraldine Green.
Thank you. There being no new business before the dust of your Baltimore City Council, this will conclude the sixty-eighth meeting of the seventy-third term of the Baltimore City Council. Baltimore, we love you.